Welcome. Welcome to our budget hearing and special meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Paullette O'Brien, John Green, Scott Lathan, Tom Brev, Brian Tobin. In the event of an emergency, visitors are advised that they may exit this room from the one side door which leads directly into the parking lot. In the event of an emergency, everyone is asked to move away from the building. Do not attempt to leave in your automobiles since this may cause traffic problems and block incoming emergency vehicles.
So, we have some special visitors with us here tonight. We're going to start with Southold Elementary School imaginers. Now, we were hoping to have two groups from the elementary school. Our musical group, unfortunately, 25 of them are participating at NISMA tonight, so we couldn't steal them away from NISMA and bring them here. So, we'll try to get them down on a different night because we really wanted them to come and showcase all of their hard work and, you know, they put on a great show. But I'm going to pass it off to Mrs. O'Neal now, and she's going to introduce some of her kids, and they're going to share with you some of the things that they do in school, and then we'll move on to the high school after that.
Should we move over to that side?
Yeah, once the kids move over.
Yeah, I think maybe. And so, well, let me ask Mrs. McBride, because they're going to stay here. Should the board come sit here so they can see? Would that be better? I think that would be better.
That would, sure.
Yeah, because you know what the boys are learning to put some coding up on. So, while they're moving. So, I reached out to Mrs. McBride and Mrs. Parma and said, "I'd like to have some kids come and share some of the work they do with you in the library and in their classrooms." And so, I'll let them go into more detail, but if you could just raise your hands, I'll say who we have. We have Lola and Emily, our fourth graders. Amir and TK are sixth graders, and then our first graders over there, Georgia, Adrian Haley, are here. So, if we could just give them a round of applause. It's definitely not easy to talk in front of a group of people, so I'm very proud of you all for coming. And I'm going to turn it over to Ms. McBride, who is, if you don't know, our library media specialist. And Mrs. Parma is a teacher assistant in the library media department. So, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thanks, Mrs. O'Neal. Pretty excited to show you what we do. This is not everything. And full disclosure, Emily made the Ferris wheel at home. We do not have all of the parts for that quite yet, but they do have another project that they made with us. Do everything from free play with Legos and Magna Tiles to encourage cooperation, sharing their imagination. I sat with a group of first graders the other day who designed a house down to building a toilet bowl, which, when you saw it, so realistic, you knew exactly what it was, which is just so fun to be able to encourage, you know, imaginative play that way. And then, these young ladies not only use a program called Code Monkey on the computers to learn coding, we also have this robot here that these ladies are going to introduce to you.
Hello, this is our friendly robot, Cubetto. We can learn to code by playing with him. I'm going to make him go to the mountains.
I know you guys can't see, but this is like a map, and on it, it has different places where you can code the robot using these little discs and telling it which way to go. And so, it's by trial and error that they learn, and eventually, they do figure it out. So, we'll put it back down so you guys can get started.
Yeah, not only is this coding, but it also reinforces map skills and cardinal directions. So, we found it very useful with the younger set.
Important to turn it on. So, right now, it's moving to different boxes. Each box is represented with a chip that she has to put in, that they put into this pad here, and they even have to program it so it turns, and then she's trying to get it to the mountains. Did you make it?
Hi, I'm Lola Fernandez, and I'm 10 years old, and I'm in fourth grade. I come from a bilingual family. We speak Spanish and English. I was new to Southold Elementary School last year. People think play is for recess. Mrs. O'Neal says play is learning. In fact, we have a day celebrating play. It's called Global Play Day. Mr. Rogers from Mr. Rogers Neighborhood. Do you guys know him? Well, he said play is the work of childhood, and I agree. Robotics coding in Makerspace might seem to just be playing to you guys, but it is actually so much more than that. It is educational and can be helpful for later in life. All of the learning you learned in Makerspace will be stuck with you forever and come back when you need it. Thank you for considering me and my friends at Southold. Good night.
I'm Emily Kennedy, and I like Makerspace because it gives me time to create, learn, and play. I like Canx because I am a person who likes to build things, which, if you are like me, Canx is perfect for when you need something to do. Creativity matters, and when in Makerspace, you can let it go wild.
Hi, my name is Amir, and I'm 11 years old. In fourth grade, like about two years ago, Mr. Gavery, our fourth grade teacher, decided to do a project with us, a coding project. So, we used Scratch, and the project was make a game, maze, whatever, something. But it was really fun. I liked the experience a lot. It was a new experience I hadn't done before.
Hi, my name is TK, and I made an example of one of the projects we could have made for Mr. Gavery's class, and this is what it would look like.
So, this is Scratch. It's a product put out by MIT. It is free for schools to use, and every year at the end of fourth grade, as these gentlemen can attest, Mr. Gavery and I work on a project where they create a game of some sort or a maze. We're actually gearing up to do it now. And each of these pieces, the background, the two characters, all of it has to be coded separately on separate pages. So, while it does look simple, it takes quite a while to create something like this. So, TK is kind enough to bring up the code that's behind this, showing all the different pieces. This is blockchain coding, which is becoming increasingly familiar, not the zeros and ones like some of us would have been used to from my generation. So, it's a really fun product to use. There is actually a Scratch Junior that's available that we sometimes use in the younger grades as well. Thank you, guys.
So, that's the elementary part. Do you think anyone had any questions for the kids? Thank you so much. You all did a great job. I don't know whether the parents want to stay a little bit for the high school or if they want to keep.
Thank you, Mrs. O'Neal. Got to keep our audience here.
Passing the baton to the high school.
So, similar to what Mrs. O'Neal had just said, a great problem that we have is you have so many amazing things that go on here in Southold. Choosing students and groups to kind of showcase is quite difficult. I do want to point out one thing, that Mr. Gavery, Mrs. McBride, Mrs. O'Neal, that the Scratch coding that goes on at the elementary school, we started a coding middle school elective for our students. And some of our seventh graders came in knowing how to code and do Scratch beyond Mr. Weznowski. He's not here, so people won't get mad at me, but to show that continuity is awesome, and it shows how we're changing with the times, and it's been quite successful, and it's a delight to be offered at the high school level as well. So, seeing that elementary basis go through the high school is really fantastic. So, beyond wanting to go back to elementary school, we have two of our groups here who we are very proud of, who've had very successful years, two very different. Our Virtual Enterprise, which is actually courses built into our schedule that students take for English credit, also for college credit that they would like, as well as our Academic Quiz Bowl team, which is a club that meets after school, but also competes against local high schools and also national high schools, as well as our VE does as well. So, I'd like to introduce Dylan Riley, the CEO of Uprise.
So, I'm Dylan, the CEO, as Mr. Rush just said, but we are Uprise.
I'm Eva, Chief Operations Officer. I'm Wanda, the attending in place President.
I'm Scott, the Vice President of Marketing.
I'm Mackenzie, the Chief Marketing Officer.
I'm Aiko, the Chief of Human Resources Officer.
I'm Anna, the Social Media Manager.
I'm Evan, the Product Manager.
I'm Johnny, and I'm the Marketing Associate.
I'm Brian, and I'm the Chief Technology Officer.
I'm Malin, and I'm the Marketing Executive Associate.
So, just a little bit about Uprise before we start. We have created a revolutionary wake-up with cancer that you take before you go to bed at night, and you wake up feeling amazing in the morning. In the making of our business, businesses, we surveyed many teachers and students from Southold to figure out our problem. That problem responds to be morning breakfast. Through, after figuring out our problem, we developed a product, name, logo, and color palette. Throughout our experiences at Uprise, we've all learned individual skill sets. Personally, I've learned how to speak in front of an audience and being more confident in what I say.
I don't want to look like this, and I have also been able to feel more comfortable standing up in front of a large audience and presenting.
Throughout the year, we've participated in many different kinds of trade shows. Not only was it a huge revenue booster for us, but we also had the opportunity to meet many different schools and firms, not only around the country, but the world.
The New York City Trade Show is the largest trade show near the end of the school year. Fortunately, Uprise qualified in Nationals for Finance, Marketing, and the Business Plan. Towards the end of the trade show, we were also able to achieve our long-term goal, which is breaking even. And then, throughout the trip, we were also able to visit many historical landmarks, such as the Bryant Park, New York Public Library, and the Grand Central Station, which was my favorite.
So, going out of high school, and maybe even in high school, people always have to go into an interview. And fortunately for us, Ms. Elwood signed us up for an interview competition where we got to experience with an actual interview, which is like before going into our first real interview, which is a super special thing, and I can tell you a little bit more about the competition.
Yeah, so we attended an interview competition and a resume competition at Wall Women High School. Around 90 students attended from different schools all over the island, and we created a resume beforehand and submitted those for competition, which Ryan won gold and Skylar won bronze. And then, we also participated in an interview competition when we were there, which we went through three different rounds, and Dylan ended up getting first, and I ended up getting second.
So, if any of you ever get the chance to walk upstairs, you'll see our beautifully curated awards cabinet that's up there. Through Virtual Enterprise, there's several competitions we had the opportunity to enter. There was a marketing plan competition, business plan, elevator pitch newsletter, and throughout it, we got gold for our newsletter, silver for our website. We were the top 10% in the nation for our elevator pitch, and then we went to Nationals for our business and marketing plan.
Because of Virtual Enterprise, we have had the opportunity to really engage with the community through going into town and connecting with local businesses and having guest speakers come in. Anna, would you like to add on?
So, with some of our networking with our community, for example, we've networked with No-Fell Wellness Center, so we've done some social media posts. She's helped us out with following with all of her followers, and I've just talked to her about what our company is and the health of that. We've also went to the giving room. They've helped us with the do's and don'ts of starting a business, and we've also had multiple parents come in that own their own business or are involved in a business, and they just kind of help us with like what we're doing and if we have any questions.
So, along with Virtual Enterprise, we get the opportunity to enroll ourselves in the internship. This can be based off of what you're doing in your future. For me, I took my internship at North Fork Country Club where I learned how to manage the golf course, which is what I want to do, and everyone else did, I think, along, something along the lines of what they're going to do. So, Skylar.
Yeah, so it's been a great opportunity for us to kind of network and make connections in our community for when we enter the workforce. I did mine at Town and Country. I met a lot of super cool people there, and I learned how to make listings and kind of advertise on social media, so it was a good experience.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Rush?
First of all, phenomenal presentation. Would you say we're the best on the North Fork in Virtual Enterprise?
Well, I 100% think we are because we're the only people to make it to Nationals for our business plan, finance, and marketing, which was a huge achievement for us. And we're really the only ones to enter all the different competitions, which is hard at the time, so it still makes us do it, but it's still worth it in the long run. And it's just such an amazing experience that we get to do because of this.
Can someone please tell me about the process to enroll in Virtual Enterprise?
Yeah, I'm sorry to interrupt you. So, in around January or whenever Mr. Krimy comes into our class, when you check off whatever elective you want, you then get put into a group classroom with Ms. Mara and Ms. Elwood, given the requirements that you're going to interview to get into the class, which that Ms. Elwood, Sedazki, and Ms. Mara interviewed the new students who want to join DE, which they just did about a few weeks ago. And we have an amazing class coming in, and she showed us it next year.
And I'll add on that we all emailed individual people that we're going to interview for next year, so if they needed any help, they can just ask us.
Thank you. Were any of these competitions remote, or were they all in person?
Yes, so there was three rounds of our business plan competition. The first one was in person at LAU, and then the second one was in Zoom, and then the third one was in New York City at Nationals.
Also, to piggyback off of that, we've also had trade shows that are remote, which was very interesting to do because when you're in person, it's easier to connect with someone and like show your personality, but when you're online, showing it through a computer and headphones, it's a little more difficult. So, I think we've all learned really helpful skills with that.
Do you actually make the product and sell the product?
So, it's all actually made of products. So, we do a bunch of science behind it, all the science behind it is real that we've learned, and we've made up mock products, which Evan can tell you more about.
Yeah, so I did all the science, all the science behind it. It doesn't actually get created, but the science is there, so it should work, but there's really no way to test it. So, we kind of made like prototypes of like what the packaging would look like, but it's not.
We also have a prototype of our like expansion product, which was Power Nap gummies, and we actually put gummies in there. They're not like, they don't actually help you sleep, but they taste good.
How much did this class help you to be up there tonight and talk to an audience like this? Are you a coach if you have done it?
Well, I took public speaking with Ms. Elwood, which I know you guys are young out there, but I definitely either take this class for public speaking because I would definitely not be able to stand up here right now and present to all you guys. And I feel like that's a super good thing to learn before you go to college, because you're going to have to get up there and present in college, and I'm sure everyone else can agree to that, that if they didn't take this class, they wouldn't be up there.
To add on to that, speaking is something that is definitely not one of my strengths, and because of this class, that's the only reason I'm up here and able to talk.
Also, to piggyback off of that. Also, like with the trade shows, we have to go up to random people we've never met from different countries or different places on the island. So, we're going up to these people that we've never met before, and I think for speaking for everyone, it just given us, this class has given us so much confidence just to like believe in what we're saying and like just be so part of the product that we spent countless hours on.
So, you're new to the district last year, so this is an elective. If you're able to take a high school.
Yes.
Out of a countless, a numerous elective selection. Have you guys ever thought about as students, have all this brochure of electives for children that are coming up? Like, how would the elementary school children who aren't here listening, how would they know about the electives other than us? And behind this, I saw a great presentation about this elective that sounds fantastic, but it's just an idea for you guys to kind of expand. Not only, I think, this course work, which sounds pretty meaningful, but I almost seem very excited that all, I imagine that there are many numerous electives that are as powerful.
Our guidance counselor has a packet of all the electives, which, which grades you can take them, what years you can take them, how many years you can take them. So, you guys will receive that coming in. Probably, if we do the shadow day again, you'll receive them then.
Amazing.
Yeah, sorry.
When you do the trade show, have you, like, have you sell, like, continue to sell your product? How much does that cost?
So, there's the Virtual Enterprise hub, which we have a POI system. So, in the beginning of the year, our finance team and sales team entered all of our products and all of our pricing in there. So, when we go to the trade show, we either have our phones or computers. We give me a newspaper, but we thought it was easier to use in our phones, and you just enter it. We have fake credit cards and debit cards that each student in the trade show gets. So, it's basically doing a fake transaction.
So, everyone is trying, like, to go buy each of the products?
Yeah, it's, everyone goes back and forth to each.
And to add on to that, you really have to learn how to be a real salesperson when doing it, and which, I think that's the biggest benefit of the trade shows, is really knowing how to sell products.
Yeah, to add on to that. So, when Dylan's saying like money, like how we buy products, it's not, it's not real money, but it's not also like given to us. We have to, throughout the weeks, we actually get a weekly day through our company. It's not actual money, but we have that in our account, and that's when we use that money to go to the trade shows and spend it on other, other people, other businesses, and they can spend it on other stuff.
So, each kid has a different amount of money depending on your job, and also, if we target the teachers, they have the most money. So, most of us try to go for the teachers and get the big bucks. And that's just like, it's been so important to go and get that money, and that's helped us so much to break even this year.
What was the most difficult process in the entire year? Can't one have been easy?
I would say our design for delay process because there's 15 students in our firm. Right now, we're missing a few with the sports and family birthdays, but 15 people who are so creative and have so many different ideas, that picking one sole problem that we wanted to solve was our biggest challenge.
I can also say that another big problem that we had was our branding. So, again, like Dylan said, we're all very creative, so we had a bunch of different ideas when we were going into it. So, Mackenzie and Skylar created our branding packet, so it's all the same throughout.
So, anyway, Ms. Elwood wants me to bring this up, the logo. So, what it is supposed to be, we have like a sun, sunrise, obviously, and it's poking through the cloud of fatigue and morning fog. We have the black background because we take our products at night, and it has like this yellow halo to like make you feel good in the morning. And then, all of our product colors, because we have like a couple different formulas for different hours of the day, they have like different sunrise colors. And then, my personal favorite one is our Power Nap gummies because they're our shortest formula, and it's bright green. And you might be like, why is the sunrise bright green? There's this weird solar phenomenon where for like 10 to 15 seconds, the sun appears bright green. So, shortest time, shortest formula, and that was kind of how we solidified all the sunrise stuffs within our branding.
Thank you very much, everybody. That was amazing. When Evan says trust the science, I trust him. Really cool thing, and I have wanted them to share, our students to share, is that there is an interview process, so our students are going through interviews with teachers to enroll in this course, and they're creating a resume. And that's not just a one-off. That's something that our students are working on with this help when they're doing their job shadow, when they're doing their volunteer experiences, and even down in our middle school. I was with Mrs. Tahada in our Family Super Sciences classes where they were doing round robin, interviews, resume questions, and even just like your typical demographic things where you're starting that process. So, we talk about college career readiness, and it's not just a one-off. It's something that we're continuing to do, as we move forward towards and get better and better. So, thank you again to our VE students. And now, for our Academic Quiz Bowl students, I'd like to introduce Thomas Skodowski and Sophia Gillen. Come on down.
Good evening. My name is Sophia Gillen.
And I'm Thomas Skodowski, and we are the Quiz Bowl Varsity Team co-captains.
I got you, I got you.
Thank you.
Is that good, Mr. Kill?
We'd like to start tonight by giving you an explanation of what Quiz Bowl actually is. The game starts with two teams of four people from different schools competing against each other. It consists of four rounds of trivia. These rounds could range from Jeopardy-style questions where everyone's on their own to team-based rounds where you have the opportunity to converse with your teammates before giving an answer. These trivia questions can range from a variety of topics, including science, history, math, literature, and even pop culture.
We have both been in this club since our sophomore year, and I'm happy to say, I think we can say that this has definitely been the strongest year for our team. This year, we've had a perfect record with winning five games and losing none on both the varsity and JV levels. Heading into the playoffs, the varsity team was placed fourth on Long Island, and the JV team was placed third, each in their respective leagues. We finished playoffs as the top team in Suffolk County, which was really exciting, and it was something we never accomplished before in the history of the team. in the history of the team. We'd like to finish this speech by saying thank you for all the support we have received because, because of everything we've done, both teams have been able to qualify for Nationals this year. And we're happy to say that we can represent Southold School in Chicago.
We would like to, we would like to once again thank Dr. Santiago and Mr. Rush for their continued support for our team. And now we would like to present a mock Quiz Bowl match to give you an authentic example of what an academic competition looks like. And we would like to challenge Ms. Elwood's virtual enterprise class.
You start whenever?
No, you start wherever you want.
Yeah, yeah, no.
Come on, Brian, hand you a clutch.
Is everyone ready? Everyone's good? All right. We're good to go? All right, we're going to start with round one, which is the toss-up round. Everyone will be given five seconds to answer. There will be no conferring, and wrong answers will be tossed over to the other team. All right, first question. Also called gravitational drag, this term names a dynamical formula by Chanda Sakar that describes bodies moving in outer space. This force, studied by tribologists, is proportional to normal load and independent of surface size according to laws by Guillemay Amontons. Hydroplaning occurs when this is unintentionally reduced, and materials decreasing it are looped. Yes, that's correct. All right, number two. This literary region contains the tree used in John Andre's Hanging and is near Sing Sing Village in Wiley Swamp. One of its residents, Hans von Ripper, owns the horse Gunpowder, and its bachelor, Abraham von Brunt, rides Daredevil. According to Diedrich Nickerbacher, this place was coasted by a high German doctor or Native American chief. At a party hosted here by Bolt van Tassel, locals told tales of a galloping Hessian who carried... That's correct. All right, number three. After this leader met with Mahmoud Abbas in 2012, a Bethlehem street was named for him. This man is thought to own 5% of Gazprom and may be the owner of the residence at Cape Ida Copus on the Black Sea. During a June 2017 call-in show, he offered James Comey asylum. This holder of a judo black belt has been photographed riding horses without a shirt. That's correct. All right. Number four. Mathematical operations have this property when the result is always in the same set as the operandos. This term describes curves in the plane with no endpoints that completely surround an area. When referring to circuits, this term means a complete path over which electricity can flow. Finite intervals that include both endpoints are known by this term and denoted with square brackets. For 10 points, give this term that can describe something with a barrier, such as a gate or locked door. No one? That's incorrect. Anyone on this team? The answer was closed. Or closure. All right, number five. Participants of this activity stopped a naked woman from vandalizing St. Luke's Church in Connecticut. Two men walked over an Encinitas, California cliff while doing this activity. A JAMA internal medicine study estimated this activity caused thousands of distracted driving incidents in July 2016. That's incorrect. Yeah, I'll just keep reading it if the other team wants to answer. North America to obtain three of its, okay. Its participants have to go outside of North America to obtain three of its species, the rare conga stan, far-fetched in Mr. Mine. For 10 points, name this augmented reality game. Yeah. Six. In the 17th century, this country was explored by Bandidantes, who were gold-seeking adventurers, including Domingos Jorge Velho. This country's coast includes the lands east of Torre de Silas line of 1494. In its early history, this country became the world's largest exporter of sugar, a status it has again today. Emperor Pedro II ran... That's correct. Question seven. One reaction takes this compound in hydrogen and produces methanol and water. Vincent Schaefer dropped the solid form of this compound into clouds over Mount Greylock to induce snow. This compound with a molar mass of 44 grams is captured and sold by Christoph Gebald and John Worsbacher's company, Climeworks, to local Swiss greenhouses. The primary component of Venus's atmosphere, this compound is responsible for soft-drink fizz. For 10 points, give this gas humans exhale whose chemical formula? That's correct. Question eight. Wilfred Owen's poem Anthem for Doomed Youth concerns participants of this historical event. Dalton Trumbo's book Johnny Got His Gun is set during this event, which Boris Pasternak describes when Dr. Zivago works in a Meliozivo hospital. Michael Morpugo wrote a novel in which Top Thorn and Joey are horses who participate in this conflict. The German author Eric Maria Remerke served in this conflict and set a... That's correct. Question nine. Claude Paul Taffinell founded a school for this instrument that Louis Lott was known for manufacturing. A soloist uses this device in both George Telemann's twelve Fantasia's and Claude Da Bousi's serenques. Though it was adapted to clarinets and oboes, the interlinking rods of the Bohem system originally applied to this instrument. It names a family of instruments, including the fife, piccolo, and recorder. For 10 points, give this wind instrument consisting of a tube and finger holes or keys. That's correct. Question 10. One species of these organisms in the genus Halomonas was discovered in the Titanic wreckage. The Luria del Brook experiment described their random adaptations. Those with a thick layer of Peptidoglican turn violet in a classification technique developed by Hans Christians Graham to survive desiccation or harmful chemicals. These small entities can form endosporous structures for protection. Colera... That's incorrect. Anthrax and leprosy are all caused by, for 10 points, what microorganisms with rodospheric shapes? No answers? The answer, the answer was bacteria. All right. We are moving on to round two, which is the team round. The losing team picks the category, which each category is 10 questions. Each team has 60 seconds to answer 10 questions. Passing is allowed. All answers will be worth five points, and conferring is allowed within team members. Do you have the losing team?
Uh, the losing team is the VE team.
All right, the VE team. You guys get to pick. I have five categories for you. You get to pick one of them. We have the letter O. We have the letter P. We have sports slash games. We have biology. And we have the letter D. The letter P. All right. You have 60 seconds to answer all of these. All right. Starting now. Question one. Green fruit served in a martini. Green, green fruit served in a martini.
Isn't that the letter O, though?
Oh, wait, wait, I'm so sorry. Reset it, reset it. Okay. We're good to go? All right. Question one. Early Egyptian paper. All right. Two. Large cloth umbrella used in skydiving. One cent. A preserved cucumber. Side by side. Math term meaning per hundred. Double-crusted baked goods such as apple, egg custard. An aide to a lawyer. An Egyptian king. A fluffy cushion on which a document needed to travel abroad. You got all 10. All right. Quiz Bowl, do you want the letter O? Sports slash games, biology, or the letter D?
We'll go with the letter O.
Okay. All right. Question one. Green fruit served in a martini. Published notification of a death. Beaten eggs cooked and folded over a filling. A pledge or promise. First Roman emperor's original name. The king of the fairies in a moon of Uranus. 71% of the earth is covered by this watery mass. Building where astronomical meteorological phenomena can be watched. Photodesert spot with vegetation. Tombstone, Arizona, site of a famous gunfight. Diamond Head is located on this Hawaiian island. That's correct. You've got, how many is that?
Eight.
Eight. All right. Now we move on to the final round, round three. Each question will be worth 10 points. 10 points will be deducted for any wrong answers. No conferring, and there will be five seconds per question. Okay. Question one. Southold's flag proclaims it is the oldest English colony in New York State. What year was Southold founded? That is correct. Number two. What group, similar to pilgrims, were Protestants whose aims were to rid the church practices from England? That is correct. Question three. What is the actual spot or site location of Reverend Young's congregation that arrived in Southold? It was Founder's Landing. Question four. This town in 1878 began disputing the fact that the first town settled on Long Island was actually not Southold. It was this town settled by Puritans from Lynn, Massachusetts. Oh, yeah, you can answer. That's correct. Number five. Name this Connecticut location in previous colony where the Puritans descended from which included 375 settlers. Each of these settlers was celebrated in 1990 with 375 candles. It was Haven Colony. Number six. Before 1640, title of all land from what is now Orient Point to Waiting River was bought by New Haven's magistrates from what Native American tribe? That is incorrect. It was the Quichogs. Number seven. Reverend Young and his adherents moved onto land already cleared by the Quichogs, whose name for the area was? That is incorrect. It was Yenica. Question eight. Natives who formerly occupied these Southold lands were pushed out and many enslaved. Those who sought rescue by a Quaker named Nathaniel Sylvester went to this island where his Quaker would welcome all. That is correct. Question nine. Transforming Southold was this form of transportation with goals of improving communication with Boston and the small village of Greenport being chosen as the terminal. That is incorrect. The answer was railroad. Oh, were you going to say that? Okay. Question 10. Name this man who wandered into Bob Rothman's department store to buy a sundial and later clarified as sandals because of his accent. That's correct. And that's all the questions.
Yeah, final score was 130 Quiz Bowl and 60 Enterprise. Thank you, Quiz Bowl, thank you, me. Thank you, Dr. Santiago, thank you, Ms. Elwood.
Thank you.
We need those brothers things when we want to talk.
I don't remember where I am. Man, I don't feel so smart.
Yeah, that was ridiculous.
That's name's Matthew. Yeah, 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 yeah. The microphone's there, right?
Yep. Microphone's there, her slides are up.
Caroline MacArthur from the Southold Library will come up now. It's a hard act to follow, isn't it, Caroline?
That was absolutely amazing. That was great. Thank you. I'm glad I could be here to see that. Thank you. So I brought a couple of slides. I didn't know how many people would stay for me, but as close as I did. I'm here to present the library budget, operating budget, 2020, '24, '25, starts July 1. It's separate from the school budget, but it's on the same ballot. It's a separate proposition. School has a budget and the public, I'm talking about the public library, just to clear that out. So our tax levy that we're requesting this year is $1,220,020. It's within the tax cap, and it covers all our operating expenses. And this is a basic breakdown, you have this handout, so you can ask me questions about it. I also gave a line-by-line breakdown of the entire budget. And should I change to the next slide? Do I know how to do that?
Spacebar or...
Okay. I just brought a couple of things because that's the budget. You can always ask me anything about it. So just to highlight a few things about the public library that you might not know. You might have seen in the Suffolk Times, Matthew Dodona, a local resident, has just published a book. We're having his book launch at the library a week from tomorrow. He's going to do some reading, he'll have books available. He is actually, it didn't say it in the Suffolk Times, but he's on the library board now. So we're very excited to have him. And we've added some discount tickets to our museum passes. So museum passes with your library card, you borrow the pass, you go there for free, and then you return it like a book a couple of days later. But the discount tickets, the Long Island Aquarium, the Science Center, I'm reading the bottom paragraph. Actually, this is an older flyer. I updated it, but I guess I uploaded the wrong one. We, we've just recently added Splish Flash, huge discount. There's a code that you just put in and order your tickets online. And the play, the Gateway Playhouse in Belleport. So for every current show, we have, we can give you a code and you can get 50% off for that show. And then every new show, we get new codes. So that's a pretty good savings per ticket. Up to 10 tickets, half price. And now, coming very, very soon, we have a native seed library. So you can come in and pick up seeds for native plants. We have flowers, vegetables, and other things that people plant. I'm not, I don't have a green thumb, so. But we have so many seeds, so come in and take seeds and plant them. And then the idea would be you would return your seeds, I guess, when you're done again. I don't know much about that because I only kill plants. But it's very exciting. The person in charge of it has done a ton of research. We've got some really great... We've got some really great seeds available, and they're, you just come in and help yourself. They're all in little envelopes, and you don't even need a library card, but I hope you have one, so. And then I did want to just bring to the school board's attention, and high school, that we are offering a scholarship. We've always, we, for many, many years, offered a $500 scholarship to a student, but we've changed it up this year, so we actually have an application. There's three choices of an essay question that kids need, the person needs to answer. It's any graduating senior, and that's available. And it's being funded through fundraising, but the board is fundraising for it, so we're hoping in future years to offer more scholarships or more money, and keep your eyes on that. And we hope to get some good applicants. We've gotten a few applications. One of the questions is, how do you see the future of the library? Another question is, how do you see AI incorporated into the library of, you know, tomorrow, the future library or something like that? There's three different questions about looking ahead to libraries. That's about it for me for now, but does anyone have any questions?
You're getting very comfortable doing this, aren't you?
We always say.
Remember that year.
Oh, gosh. Derek in some years, but you know, whatever.
You do an amazing job, you and your staff at the library.
Staff is doing a good job, yes. We really, um, we're serving meetings. Place is bustling, it's very busy. Kids come in after school every day. We can hear them walking up the road. They all come in, it's the second-floor teen room. They do all sorts of great things up there.
And the district appreciates your showcasing our art students' work up there every year, too, and probably could do a better job getting the word out there, too, and, you know, thank you to the library for doing that.
Every April, we have the school art there, and it's just amazing. And so many people come in and appreciate, because people come in and don't know they're students, and then they're like, whoa, who did this artwork? And we tell them, and, you know, I always encourage people to come to shows and concerts here, and then you can see a lot of art, too. Yeah, so we have art exhibits all throughout the year. That's a highlight. All local artists. I did make another list of little things that I have. Notary service, we deliver to at-home patrons, we do local history tours. Those kids could come on a local history tour of the cemetery and learn all about, you know, 1640 and prior to. We do, we've been doing ESL classes from September to April for patron, for mostly adults, patrons of all ages. And one thing we've been working a lot in coordination is with Stony Brook University Healthy Library, they have a program now called Healthy Libraries Program, and all sorts of health-related programs, services, and we also get, I request a social work intern, so it's a person going for their master's in social work. And we get, it's always been a female, so we get her September to May, and she comes to the library for a set number of weeks and helps the community in any type of social work needs. And she was very, very busy this past year, I have to say. She had a lot of clients. I'm going to be sorry to see her go. And of course, if you haven't downloaded your Libby app, we have a massive, really vibrant collection of eBooks and e-audio books that you can download anytime with your library card. So now I get some of them done. Unless you want to hear more. We do more. Thanks so much.
Thank you so much. And I guess last, Mr. Shide and Dr. Moore, this, the only reason behind the meeting on this is it's a required budget hearing by the state, so we can tell you what our budget is that we've already adopted, that can't be changed anyway, but it's the state's rule, so here we are.
So just before Mr. Shide goes, we, we offered three different options, because when we, the date that we had to adopt our budget, the state still had not finalized their budget. One of the options, the primary one, which was the most thorough that we prepared, aligned with what the state eventually adopted as their budget, and, and those are the numbers that you'll be seeing tonight, because they are, it worked out that, you know, their, the information they gave us prior to actually adopting at the very end was fairly accurate, and that's what we used and, and we ended up going with. So, you know, knock on wood, it worked out for us. There were some other places that did not, they ended up with different numbers, very difficult to budget that way when you don't know what you're getting, but, you know, that's where we're at. So Mr. Shide's just going to quickly run through them now, and, you know, as, you know, as was said already, they were adopted a few weeks ago.
Thank you, Dr. Moore. Again, just to piggyback off that, I know with the state aid, it's going to be interesting for next year, I'm going to have to watch closely where, again, they did keep the hold harmless in place. They do mention next year, the formulas will change, so again, I'll have to keep a close eye in for next year. So just the one slide recap, budget to budget increase of the 4.11%. That will drive a tax levy increase of 2.81%. We try our best to keep the costs as low as possible. We did, were able to get it $30,000 under the tax cap. I believe that tax levy limit was 2.91%. This budget maintains all programs and opportunities at the same level as the current year. We are giving back $955,000, so that's both using some reserves and also appropriated fund balance. It's a little bit of an increase from prior year, which was in the $800,000 range. Like I said, we look at that each year, the reserves, we always maintain proper balances based on guidelines, and like I said, we, we look at that every year, we use that to offset the tax levy in the budget. And finally, the estimated tax increase for the average house is about $16 per month or $186 a year. And again, that would work out to the 2.81% increase.
So on that third bullet down where it says we're maintaining what we have, that does not mean that everything will be exactly the same. Enrollment changes some things, student choice changes some things, like you heard about electives tonight. If we have students that take a lot more of one elective, we might offer two sections of that instead of one, and we might not offer a section of another elective that they don't take. So it's important to understand that when we say, you know, we will be maintaining, that means we'll be offering everything we've offered, but it will not look exactly the same, it never looks exactly the same. There may be more or less kids in certain programs, and we may run certain teams because we have enough players and not. We may have certain groups because we have enough people in them and we, and we may not. That is the choice that we offer to our students, and we don't dictate that to them, they dictate that to us as we go through. So the fact is that we will be offering everything that we offered this year. That doesn't mean, and I don't want it to be misconstrued as it's going to be exactly the same, because there is that student choice and enrollment components that impact everything we do.
And just a, just a final thing, I just thought of it. We were working on a budget brochure, the budget notice will go out shortly. On the website has the backup, some documents for the, what drives the budget, the school report card, so that's on the website, and they'll be available at each building. And again, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Thank you.
Thanks, Chuck.
And that just brings us to a motion to adjourn.
So moves.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.